But another thing that both Dave and Wally work on is our historic preservation program. You know, for our community, we are the oldest in Iowa and we have thousands of historic structures. You can see a lot of them here in the downtown, but also in the suburbs and really more than probably any other Iowa community, we have a great preservation program and that gives us a really unique identity. I'm going to talk about three things that we work on. I mentioned we do regional planning and then city planning and city zoning. So this is kind of overview of each of these. We're at the juncture here on the Mississippi River where the states of Iowa, Illinois, and Wisconsin meet. So we call it the tri-state region. And within that, we have a smaller area that we focus on for transportation, for economic development, and also for planning for future land use. We have a long-range transportation plan that's been adopted. It deals with all different modes of transportation from vehicles and freight to transit and pedestrian. This is the area that we focus on for planning. You can see, the area includes parts of Illinois and Wisconsin. And the city of Dubuque is the largest city, but there's also City of Asbury, which is adjacent to us, Piastor, and Centronia, which are off to the west a little bit in this urbanized area. But the area that's in white within our boundary is still largely rural, a lot of farms, some residential subdivisions, but still this urbanized area still has a lot of rurality.
And the city of Dubuque is about 32 square miles. Our corporate limit's about 32 square miles. So just kind of give you a scale. And there was a scale on how big an area we're talking about.
One of the things we also do in addition to transportation is we work together on economic development. And so we'll look at this on a, it's a five, it's actually a five-counting region, so it's actually beyond just our tri-state region. And it's so that we coordinate our economic development strategy for the future as a region and not just a single city or a county. And then the other thing that we worked on three years ago, was adopted, is our Dubuque County Government Letter Regional Comprehensive Planning Process with six cities, including Dubuque. And these were some of the major reasons we started to do this. We had, each city that worked with the county had a comprehensive plan and that's how the county pulled those cities in. There are like 20 cities in Dubuque County. Many of them are very, very small. So the ones that already had a comprehensive plan worked with the county on this. We really wanted to work together. Of course, we want to work, again as I mentioned, on economic development. But you can see, we have a lot of beautiful scenery, agricultural as well as natural. And so we wanted to preserve those resources as well as the towns themselves. We also had flooding, so we wanted to be more resilient to those types of disasters. And we wanted to make sure each city had its own unique identity within the county. We also were dealing with land use issues. These are very typical across Iowa and probably across the Midwest, maybe across the country. We have, you can see, some development, but also a lot of farms. In the foreground, where, let me see, here's everything. This is actually our industrial park when it was first developing. So this is a park we created, a pond, our first development. When in near that, this is the county fair. It's been there a long time. This is a petroleum tank farm. And there's little houses scattered about here and there and farms in our county landfill. See, we've, this picture actually shows a lot of things that are going on, but still lots of farm land around us. And so one of the things we're concerned about is what we call leapfrog. Where you jump from here, start doing something way over here, and the infrastructure has to get stretched out. The other concern that came up as our planning process was these areas of woods and farms that make Dubuque County beautiful, they can get transformed into housing developments, but there's, the homes are on very large lots, an acre or more, and it's back to that, they're spread out and they want the same amount of services, but they don't provide the same revenues. And so we had issues there. And those developments were creating erosion problems and stormwater runoff in addition to the agricultural processes. So those are some of the issues we're trying to address during our planning process. One of the things we did was we looked at our last comprehensive plan for the county, and that was in 2002. And it was really focused on a lot of residential occurring around the city of Dubuque and the city of Asbury. And in 2012, we kind of pulled that back in closer and really left a lot of this county agricultural. So when you look at the county on this map, you can see what I mean when I said we had a lot of open space and farmland still in our county. And so the plan was kind of changed to make sure that we took that into consideration. And these were some of the things that we identified as opportunities for us to continue to work together. Maintaining both the town and rural character. I talked about flooding. We have now, we now plan on a county basis for hazard, slight flooding. And we also have a regional watershed management plan, and I'll talk about that. The idea was that we would continue our collaboration to keep development within our city and within our planned growth areas and work together to improve regional development. The Catfish Creek Watershed Management Plan was one of those things we continued to work on together with the county and the city. This was a joint effort with what's called the Catfish Creek Watershed Management Authority. That's a, it's sort of a form of, it's sort of like a board or commission. It's not really the same as our local government. Each local government has a representation on this watershed board. And they, along with the city in Dubuque, which is the most area in this watershed, hired a consultant to develop this watershed management plan. We had a couple of major goals for this. We wanted to improve the water quality. It was very poor in the watershed. Catfish Creek actually has five forks, except for a few places upstream. Many of them had really poor quality. We had soil which allows the water, reduces the temperature, or increases the temperature, and so the cold water stream habitat for trout was impacted. We also had pollution from both urban and agricultural uses. So we were trying to improve quality. And then because we had these erosion issues, we also had stream banks that were washing away and then we had flooding issues. So we were trying to address all those things. So some of the ways we were doing that is we looked at a way to try to link those green areas through a green infrastructure network throughout our watershed area. We also had detention basins, particularly in the city of Dubuque and the city of Asbury in this portion of the watershed. And we were looking at ways to retrofit them. If they're just turf, just grass, like a lawn, they don't work as well as if they have native plants. And so that was some of the things we were looking at to make them more effective and increase infiltration rather than just continuing to run off. The stream and repairing area restoration is actually, there's actually a demonstration project going on with the watershed board in the city, rebuilding stream banks and armoring them so that the stream can continue in its, pretty much in its normal fashion, but the banks are stabilized and the water quality improves and the flooding risk is reduced because then this acts like a floodplain instead of just being washed away. We also continued to encourage our farmers to use their existing management practices like tarracine and contouring and no-till farming to help with this effort. And we also have, we now have a cost share program to help farmers add to that or if they don't have any of these practices, to add them to their farms. So back down to the urban level. In our community, we have a comprehensive plan. We're working on, Dave will talk about this in just a minute. We do have a history planning. This is the cover of our 1936 comprehensive plan. And so that's pretty innovative for a city in the size of Dubuque to have a comprehensive plan. And it was done by a gentleman named John Nolan. He was a planning consultant at the time. He did plans for the city of Madison and-
Venice, Florida. He did San Diego, California's first plan. So a very well-known city planner.
So we had a pretty enlightened city council in the 1930s, which we're very happy for as planners. Dave's going to talk about our new comprehensive plan. And this will give you some information about community engagement that may be helpful for your trying to reach the cocoa producers as well as trying to reach people about climate change. We also have a number of areas where we've done special plans. Last night's agenda, I was addressing Chaplin Schmid Island. We've also done a master plan for the Port of Dubuque for downtown, for our Millworth District, and for our Washington neighborhood. And we've done a case study for this portion of the Washington neighborhood, the central area, the corridor. City zoning is our major tool in our department for implementing our comprehensive plan goals. We created a unified development code that includes zoning, land subdivision, site development, and historic preservation. And so within that, we have an ordinance, which is the actual text or language. But then Wally created a lot of diagrams for our ordinance because reading the word and seeing the picture makes a big difference. If we can give people a picture and walk them through kind of a typical yard, it helps them understand things like where they can build on their property and where we want to have setbacks. We also have encouraged people to do development within some design guidelines. Looking at, this subdivision was an infill. This was a vacant property with some woods along a portion of the Catfish Creek that flooded. And so the developer used this as a detention area, incorporating where the drainage actually went, kept the trees in. They put in permeable pavement in the street and actually don't need catch basins or storm sewers. The pavement infiltrates, the water goes into the creek. And so this was an example of that we wanted other people to consider. And that was something we did with our new code. We also maintain an official zoning map. We have lots of zones, about 30 of them, and some specialized zones. But basically, they fall into a couple of major categories: residential, commercial, office, and industrial. We have a few like institutional, which are hospital and college campuses. And then we still have agriculture in our city limits. And so we have some agricultural areas in our program. We're actually updating that to make sure we preserve the agricultural land in our community. We also have a team process. The Planning Services Department meets every week with these other departments, the building, engineering, fire and water department staff review new developments, new land subdivisions. And that helps us keep our process organized. So developers don't have to go from one department to another. They come to this team and get their questions answered and the code review done. And that's our contact information. And we can, we'll provide this PowerPoint to you electronically. And I think I'll stop if there are any questions. The hand will provide it. That provides you with an overview of what we do. It also shows that a lot of what we do is communicate with other people. It could be other departments within the city, or it could be our own board, the commissions. And we'll provide you a couple of maps that show where we do our development services work and our historic preservation work in the city in itself.
Well, Wally, you supervise all the super days to work, whether you're in the research.
We do, and that's what Dave's going to talk about on the overall level. When we have those special plans, the special planning areas. Each of these had its own public input process. And so we would ask people within the downtown or within the Washington neighborhood what their vision was. And we also asked the rest of the community, anybody else who wanted to try and get. And not all the planning was done by us. This is the Bee Branch Project. And the engineering department used some very similar process that we often use. They have a citizen committee, several, to help with where should this be, what should it look like? And so that committee had a very, was drawn from the neighborhoods. And overall, then, the rest of the people in the neighborhoods could also provide their input as well as the citizens at large. And in downtown, the port, Chaplin Schmid, well, actually, I think in all of these, we did not just a plan, but we did an economic feasibility analysis and a marketing study to, as a reality check, to make sure that what we were planning for future use was actually a market demand for and made sense from an economic standpoint. And that's been a pretty good process. It's also a way then for us to track how we're doing as the plan goes forward through implementation. Any other questions? If none of them turn around today, do you have, do you need to put yours up there or something?
No, I do. I need to put that on there.
So how large are communities do you guys come from? How large are your cities that-
I live in the second largest city in Indonesia. It's about 10, no, 3 millions.
3 million.
Yeah, I live in modern city, at least about 7 million.
I live in small city. It's only than 100,000 population.
I think at 20, we call 100,000 a small city.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we're about 60,000.
60,000, yeah.
Switch places.
This information is available on the website of the U.S.
What I'll do is, whoa, speaking a little. What I can do is, I can send that to you. Lots of things that we've done is we've gone to, sent everything to Stephanie. Then she sends it out. But we can also send it directly to you. I don't think it's, we know we are on the website, although there's a lot on there.
No. We'll probably just have to compile it in a PDF and we can send, we can send you the PDFs.
We made them special for this meeting, so we pull things off on our website, but it's special.
And it's as, quite simple as situation. If that person interested in the planning, how they listen to more on it.
They can use our website. Dave and Wally manage the webpages we have. We have a section just for historic preservation because we have a lot of people interested in their properties. And then we have a section that has information on our city planning. We have a website just for Imagine Dubuque, which is our new comprehensive plan process. We have information then also on development services. Wally's put all the applications up for going through a development review process. We have a map that Wally created that's interactive. You can go to it and look up your zoning and then information about your property. So we have a number of ways on our website. And people can always call us or email us or come in and talk to us. And so we have a number of ways to try to reach people and share what we're doing or if they have questions, try to answer those.
Because in Japan, if I buy a house, yeah, I need to find out if that house is in the planning zone. You know, that's why. And I have to go to the department, the planning department, and find out whether it's a professional company. Yeah, and I had to buy your fee.
We do have some professional companies who call us and have us fill out their forms for them.
Sony verification, right?
And Ford Point, it's, yeah. We have something similar.
Generally speaking, I'd say a lot of our services are set up where the resident can just work directly with us or a city department on that. Very rarely, I'd say, in the bulk of our interactions with the public is there some other, you know, professional that would be required in order to facilitate that process. Part of what we do is our best actually to help people through a process and provide them with the information that they need. So we try to be very customer-friendly with that regard.
Sometimes we do have realtors, people that you would, you're looking to purchase, they help try to find you a house and you tell them what they want, and they help locate that. Sometimes they'll contact us on behalf of the person who's that we purchase in, inquire. But I think it's much easier and more beneficial to the property owner who's ever purchased and worked directly with us. Because we can tell them specifically what's allowed, what's not allowed. And make sure that information gets relayed to the ultimate user of the property, so.
Well, I'm going to, if there aren't any other questions, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about Imagine Dubuque, which is our campaign for the new City Dubuque Comprehensive Plan. Do your communities, do they have plans or comprehensive plans for their cities and regions that you may be familiar with?
Yeah, we do have.
Okay. In Dubuque, we've actually been planning since 1936, as Laura pointed out in her slides, with John Nolan's first plan. And really, the plan is our leading policy guide for development as well as community initiatives in our city. And our plan is twofold. We have a text component, we have a map component. And they're really interdependent. They don't work separate from each other, they complement each other. So we have a land use map that sets policy for future land use decisions. And those are supported through our text component, which also outlines a number of community values and initiatives as expressed by residents in our city. Because after all, that is what is most important about this process. That's why we have a comprehensive plan. So a lot of people ask, well, why is a comprehensive plan important? Why do you do this? And essentially, the, one of the fundamental purposes of government and nonprofit agencies in Dubuque and our area nation is to provide public value. We want to be able to provide public value to our residents. And in order to do so, we as government must know what our public values. And that's really the most significant benefit of doing a comprehensive plan. Through all of our community engagement efforts, we can get a consensus of our community's values and ideas for what they want and what they need in the future. And then that in turn informs our community leaders, both inside and outside of government, about those values and about those initiatives. And so that informs our city council how they can direct spending or how they can direct resources. So the projects and the initiative and the work that we're doing as a community reflects in large part what our community have told us that they want. Now, of course, there's some things that we as an organization, we have to do. We have to keep the streets plowed and we have to, you know, maintain our parks and maintain our roads. There's just fundamental things that we do as a matter of business. However, that's essentially what this comprehensive plan is, is it's the community's plan. It's the community's plan. So that's really the value of this. So we've been, again, we've been planning since 1936. We've done a number of updates since 1936, though. We hadn't done a new comprehensive plan since 1996. In the meantime, in the 1950s, we did do a downtown master plan. That was somewhat successful, however, never officially adopted because there were some contentious points about demolition of our downtown. And thankfully, a lot of those plan concepts never came to fruition. However, there's still a lot of good points in that plan about intergovernmental cooperation. And, you know, that's really kind of a policy that today we really still continue to embrace. If you haven't heard it enough already, you will in your time here. People Planning Partnerships, that's really Dubuque's mantra towards development, whether it be land use or community development, that larger community development umbrella. So however, oh yes.
Yeah, related to public value from the perspective of Dubuque itself. Like, do people want to preserve their historic or make it a sustainable city or?
We've actually been hearing a lot of things. And I'll address some of that in my presentation. We're hearing a lot of ideas about specific projects. But also, we're also hearing a lot of things about intangible things or ideas or values or initiatives that people would like. Some of those themes we've already identified, I think we have about 12, and I'll kind of briefly talk about those. But essentially, we use all of these ideas and values and projects to develop themes and those themes will become the framework of our new plan. And sustainability is one of them, I can tell you that. Inclusivity or an inclusive community is another one. And we'll address that a little bit later.
Okay.
And also, feel free to interrupt with a question anytime. I'd be happy to answer any questions as we go through this. So these are some of the issues that we've identified that we want to look at. Again, we are doing the engagement component of this plan through the lens of sustainability, our economic prosperity, our social-cultural vibrancy, as well as our environmental integrity. Equity has also become a big component of our engagement effort with this plan. So these are just some of the issues underlying that. Urban design, developable land use, transportation, infrastructure, housing, health, education, public safety, and economy has been a very big point of engagement for us. We spent a good part of the initial stages of our project talking with business leaders, stakeholders, and residents about that. So as you can see, much like sustainability, the engagement framework of our plan touches on those issues within our community that affect people in their everyday lives. And these are things that have traditionally and currently been important issues towards the quality of life.